South Windsor, and welcome to the South Windsor Town Council regular meeting of Monday, July 3 at 7:00 PM. Could we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please? That pledge this evening means more than any other day of the year, on the eve of the Fourth of July and our Independence Day. So happy Fourth of July, South Windsor. I have a few announcements that I'd like to say. We have the Fourth of July tomorrow, and the town hall will be closed all day. We have, July is the Parks and Recreation Month, a National Park and Recreation Month, and I had the pleasure of presenting a proclamation to the Park and Rec Department at Evergreen Walk at their first Summer Series concert on Thursday evening, and Mr. John Caldwell was there, and the director, Molly Keys, was there to receive it, along with some Park and Rec Commission members, and Counselor Kabaski. It was a wonderful evening. I'm not gonna, next one is gonna be Ms. Daria Plummer, who's gonna report on that. I would also like, if we could, just take a second, a moment of silence, there's a very important person also that was in South Windsor. Her name was Jean Klein, and Jean Klein worked down at Wood Memorial Library for many, many, many years. Jean Klein was the person who created the Native American Program about our local Native Americans here in South Windsor, that was taken and elaborated upon over the years, but she was the founding person of all of that, which ended up helping all our third graders in South Windsor to learn about our local Native Americans that we had here before the white settlers came. So, I can't tell you how many third graders have been taught over the years. I've been doing it for 29, and every year it's a little over 300, 350 kids, so somebody can do the math. But that was, I worked with Jean many years ago. So with what Jean created, those items were also taken out of town to other towns and used in their school systems, too. So if we could take a moment of silence just to recognize Jean, please. Thank you. And I'm gonna let Ms. Daria Plummer report on that, and we have, as you can see, for the council members, we have openings from Counselor Paterno leaving the council, the town council, the Economic Development Commission, Agricultural Commission, Energy Committee, Senior Advisory Council, Capital Projects Committee, and Ethics Committee. We also have from Counselor Gamble leaving the council, the Library Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Connecticut Water Customer Advisory Council, the Naming Committee, and the Personnel Committee. So everyone has that listed before them, and you guys can go over that, I believe. You have that? Did they get the list, or no? They didn't get the list. All right, you'll get the list. You'll get the list on when they meet, how lo, what time they meet, and who the chair is. So everyone will end up with the list, and we'll be discussing this for next, our next meeting. And now, after that, could, oh, I'm sorry, I did Mayor's Remarks before roll call. Sorry, do your roll call.
Counselor Evans?
Here.
Counselor Kabaski?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Pendleton?
Present.
Deputy Mayor King?
Here.
Counselor Kazakowski?
Counselor Leidecker?
Here.
And Counselor Kazakowski's not here, so Counselor Kabaski, please take the adoption of the agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion, changes, additions, deletions, on your white paper?
Under 13, I'd like to move for new business, two resolutions, it looks like, one for Counsel Leidecker, resolution appointing Matthew Serakusa, and then one for myself, H., resolution appointing Anita Alongo. So I'd like to move those to number 13, new business.
Are those, these are gonna be added to the agenda, and the ones that are presently there are going to be removed, because those are the ones for the next meeting.
Thank you so much for letting that. Yes, ma'am.
And is there a second on those changes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any, that motion carries, and so now we're gonna take a motion to adopt, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Evans.
Thank you. Under item 10, it is listed as Mass Transit and Highway Advisory Committee. It is actually a commission. So I'd like to request to move it to number nine, under Economic Development Commission.
Oh, okay. Because that is a commission, got it? And you want to put it under item nine? Okay. Just moving it up. Perfect. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? That motion carries, and now I'd like, is there any other changes to the agenda? Deputy Mayor King?
Yep.
Okay, so now I'd like to have, make a motion, have a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any? Thank you, the motion carries. All those in favor, I should have said. All those in favor. Okay. That's all done. Communications and reports from the town manager, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In terms of our Pleasant Valley and Pleasant Valley Road and Bridge Construction, the project is moving along on schedule, and I wanted to make sure that the council and public is aware that the road will be closed starting on Wednesday, and I believe that'll be probably through the end of the project. Also, in terms of parking at Veterans Memorial Park, with that project ongoing, while there is some reduced parking on the lower lot, we've been reworking some of the flow of parking in that area, and I wanted to make sure that the public was aware that the upper lot has had significant amount of parking available to anybody, and there is a gate up there that residents can get in to get into the pool. So I would recommend if you do decide to go to the pool, plan on possibly parking on the upper lot, it should be easier, and the flow of traffic to get out should be significantly easier as well. A couple other items, both the Police Department and Community Center are slated to start their paving for their parking lots this come, this week. So any residents that are planning to go to either of those locations, please set aside some additional time and be aware of contractors that are gonna be working there. Actual construction of the splash pad at Nevers, at Nevers Park has started construction. I also wanted to make the council aware that I attended the CTCMA Town Managers' Association Meeting last week. The big topic this year that we discussed were challenges associating with hiring municipal employees. The town of South Windsor, along with most of the other towns in the state of Connecticut, are actually struggling to hire qualified employees, especially when it comes to recruitment of licensed employees for certain positions that require licenses and certifications. As a result of that, we discussed a number of ideas, and basically across the board, we've kinda come to the conclusion that both the state of Connecticut, as well as a number of our associations that have the responsibility for licensing individuals for certain positions, have really limited the applicant pool to a point that it's almost concerning, and it's like we're drinking from a straw when it comes to trying to identify new recruits to bring into the field. So we threw around a number of ideas, including opportunities that the Capital Region Council of Governments is currently looking at, and hopefully we'll be able to come to some conclusions on those moving forward. Couple items that I didn't get onto my written report for all of you. First of all, with the new fiscal year starting, we ended up our last fiscal year, just wanted to bring, make all of you aware, that our collection rate for this last year was 99.47, so just off a little bit from the previous year's collection rate, but overall, our collection, our tax collector and the tax collectors department did a great job in terms of our tax collection. Couple, and one other item, we were notified today that the State Bond Commission has approved a $1.3 million grant for the town of South Windsor for our Water Pollution Control Authority facility, that is to address some of the odor control issues that we've had at that facility. It is a half of what is actually needed for the whole project, and this year, the WPCA was able to allocate $230,000 out of their capital budget for addressing some of those other odor control issues, and through conversations that we had today, they're going to be doing that on an annual basis, moving forward for multiple years to make up that other half. From the way that project is laid out, I think we'll be able to phase that, phase that work in, so that way we can address it and shouldn't feel too much of an impact to our, to our pockets, moving forward. Then the last item I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, I know I emailed this out to everybody last, last week, on the council at least, and I believe it's posted on the Planning and Zoning Department's webpage, but we did receive a letter from Metro Realty, better outlining what the development that's being proposed for housing is over on Demming Street. And I, I know I've heard a lot of rumors going around about what it is going to be used for, you know, what the housing is going to be focused on, and I think it's important that everybody understands the facts, and I would direct the, both residents, as well as the council and everybody else, to that letter on the Planning and Zoning page, so, from Metro Realty. And that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions the council may have at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, the person that had reached out yesterday, yesterday regarding the parking lot, they were an older person, and they were talking about the fact that they had to park up top, and they had some difficulty walking from up there down to, I guess they take the lower gate, because there's families and camps that are at, at the upper gate. Is there some way we can expand the parking for those folks who can't make that walk from the upper parking lot?
I don't quite understand why they would have to walk to the lower parking lot to get in. I'll have to ask staff, because my understanding is that upper gate is open to the public, as well as camps and everybody else, so.
It is, it's just that they didn't wanna walk through all the camps and all the families. I guess they're saying it's kinda split, where you've got the older folks in one part of the pool, and families and campers are in a different part of the pool, and it makes it a little bit difficult for them to walk in from the upper gate.
Got it. I'll have to see what I can work on for that one. Okay.
Counselor Evans?
Just to, I was going to touch on the VMP parking, and really thank you for, and the town and the staff for the changes that were made, because that first day that swim lessons opened, it was quite chaotic. There was not clear parking, there were people parking in handicap accessible spots, or blocking, blocking the driveway. So I think some great changes have been made to make it more conducive and safe to the public to use. You know, I had mentioned, actually, is there a way to turn that front parking lot into like a handicap only parking lot, which I know there's some logistical issues with signs. I, I know the area that you're referencing, the senior group does tend to have like their specific area that they park, or park themselves, seat by the pool, which does tend to be kind of near that gate entrance. So I'm wondering now, and hearing that, maybe we don't make it a handicap only, but maybe we put some signage up and make, ask people that don't have mobility issues, or, or, I don't know, I don't know what the wording would be, but somehow to make it the request to the public to try to use the back lot unless they need to park in the front lot. My question about that had been, in previous summers, the front gate is always staffed, but the back gate is not always staffed. Because of this parking, is that going to be staffed and always open, because the back gate is going to be?
That was, that was my understanding, is that back gate would be staffed throughout the year.
Great. And then the only other question is, I want to follow up on an email that I had sent you about the library staff following the passage of our budget. I had spoken to Mary Etter, and she had stated at that time they were imminently hiring a children's department director and a research librarian. Could you report to us on what that staffing is at this point?
Yeah, I know that they've been interviewing people, and I think they're in the process of onboarding a couple of people. They do have some other personnel issues that are ongoing, that I don't think are probably appropriate for us to discuss in a public forum at this time, but I'd be happy to talk about them maybe offline at some other point, so. But they are working on it.
Thank you.
Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Town Manager, the $1.3 million from the state bond, it's for part of the repairs you had mentioned, half, pretty much. And you mentioned that it might be, the method would be a phased approach of the work to be done, but I thought that more of that would be needed in order to start any type of work. What kind of phased approach would that be?
So in conversations I had with Mr. Manfree today, their, their plan is to do, kinda start picking off, if you remember, there was an engineering report that probably got sent out to the council a number of months ago, and there's a whole bunch of different projects that are outlined within that report to, that need to get done. So they're gonna start picking off some of the easier ones first, in terms of like the sledge thickeners and storage tanks, because those are the most odor producing. And then they're gonna start doing some of the other portions of the projects that need to get taken care of that are, I don't even know the right way to say it, besides maybe the more technical pieces a little bit further down as they go. So I believe overall, he said it may be in total five years overall, but he's already working on the bid package to go out to get kinda the, the, the big things taken care of right now. So, you know, the idea is that if it's $1.3 million, we, that's the half from the state, we need to come up with another 1.3, we're probably looking at, you know, about five years of funding out of the WPCA capital fund anyways, to be able to finance that. So I think we'll be able to, you know, meet the financial obligation, as well as be able to do the construction project as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez. Counselor Kabaski?
Thank you. One more question on the parking lot. So was it, was it always the plan that that equipment was gonna be taking up that parking, parking lot? Because I thought originally it was that there would be no interruption of the park.
Yeah, so our original thought was the, the equipment was going to be in the corner, more in the corner by where the bridge was. They were gonna have to build a pad that they would put a crane on, and that would be it. But then, when the equipment got there, there were some pretty significant safety concerns associated with how close it was to other cars and everything else, as well as the need for that embankment to actually have work on it on the side of Pleasant Valley Road. So, excuse me, as a result, we did end up having to take up a little bit more of the parking, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, if you wouldn't mind, because I've been receiving a lot of emails concerning folks' tax bill, and if you wouldn't mind, please help us to understand, give us a reason why our taxes are so high. Basically, explain that to us. What is, I know the process that we went through, but explain why some folks have larger, or some have less?
Sure. So there's two parts to the tax increase that really occurred this last year. First, and probably easiest to understand, is an increase in spending associated with inflation, which we saw both on the Board of Ed side and the town side, which caused a lot of the increases in costs that we saw, like for gasoline, or salt, or some of the other essential purchases that we had to do. The other portion that increased our taxes is also our revaluation in the values of all our homes, which went up. So I think overall, we saw across the community as a whole, the values on our homes increased. I believe it was on average about 33%. So when you take those two things combined, and you look at the average price of a home, about 50% of your tax increase actually comes from revaluation, and the other 50% comes from the actual tax increase for cost of doing services and doing business.
And we don't control the revaluation? That state statute, and that state governed?
Yeah, so revaluation is mandated by the state of Connecticut. We must do it every five years by statute.
By statute, okay. And then the other thing, if you wouldn't mind just addressing, please, because I've seen a lot of statements and questions about this, concerning abatements. Could you help us understand abatements, please?
So essentially, the town provides tax abatements to potentially new businesses or existing expanding businesses consistent with state statute. So state, we're not allowed to do, we're not allowed to provide abatements unless we're following what the state statute identifies and outlines, as every other municipality does. So the maximum that the state statute allows is a 70% abatement for seven years. The idea of doing tax abatements is that we would have a piece of property that may be generating $10,000 in tax revenue every year. We would then see some type of an increase in that tax revenue because of the development that occurs, so maybe it would go up to $100,000 in revenue, but we then give them 70% of that off, which then results in us maybe generating, instead of $10,000, maybe we're getting $20,000 or $30,000 in revenue as a result. And that's only on the taxes generated from both the, the land, as well as the building. Personal property within the facility is still taxed at 100%, as well as any automobiles that may be associated with that facility.
And once an abatement is given, they're also committed to staying for X amount of years in the town?
So the town also puts in place a number of clawback provisions associated with the individual business making commitments to the town, since we are essentially making an investment within them. We want them to also make an investment within our community. So we make sure that they commit to staying within our community for an additional 10 years beyond the abatement, that they also meet our employment requirements, so that they hire the appropriate number of individuals that we've identified, and that they actually meet the construction requirements associated with the dollar, the actual dollar amount of the construction that they promised that they're gonna do.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you.
And moving on to public input for items on the agenda, item number seven. Public input shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by myself, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any item on the agenda? Please come forward. There's a little button down at the base. You just hit that, and it will turn red. There you go. Is, is it red? Okay. Mike, can you give me, there you go. We're good.
Roy Norman, Homestead Drive. Good evening, council members. I'm, the council has on the agenda this evening a tax abatement for the wrong recipients. It should be tabled. The grand list increased a total of 23%. However, in that 23%, commercial and industrial only went up 11%, whereas residential went up 38%. The mill rate only went down 12% from 38.77 to 34.11. The abatement application should be applied to all property owners, as it appears that the town council approves a 12% increase in real estate taxes to be collected and shifted more to the real estate tax, residential real estate tax burden from commercial industrial disproportionately to the residential taxpayers in a single year. And I know that you can't give a rebate, an abatement to residential, but you can always ask. As a former council member, and as a resident of the community, this is, this type of increase in a single year is just unprecedented. I mean, I've been around here for a few years, never seen anything like it. We did a phase in, in the tax increase in the past, and I think it should have been done this year, and I don't remember that when it was done in the past that it created any great problems. My own tax bill went up 29%, 30% for round numbers. That's a big number. $2,300 worth. How is that justified? My assessment went up 45.8%. I appealed my assessment and got only token reduction. Due to the dramatic assessment increase, I'd expected that the mill rate would have made a dramatic drop, and to raise the same amount of taxes in the operating budget, plus the budgetary increases, which I believe were about 8%. While I still would expect to pay an increase in taxes, I was not expecting a 30% increase in my taxes. Town council and staff should have been, seen this coming, and ameliorated the impact. At a minimum, there should have been better letter, there should have been a letter notifying property owners of what was occurring, and why such large increases were being issued in a single year. I was expecting to be able to count, continue living in my modest home. Now the economics of calling all those, these places, calling all those plans into question. If I move the additional budget to the town, will be significantly impacted, as my home likely would be sold to a young family, putting more pressure on the school system that's already overcrowded, and it, and it's already, if it isn't already. I don't know that the town council considered the impact of such an income increase, and the future increases that will likely come. Our neighbor to the north, Massachusetts, has a proposition two and a half that requires voter affirmation to increase two and a half percent over the tax levy increase. They at least have a say if the taxes will go up. 30%. I'm disappointed, and frankly, quite worried about the leadership and the town council sustaining community trust by the financial burden put on local taxpayers. I trusted the council to have the best interest of all voters and property owners as a priority. I expected the council to be more open with their communications, so that everyone was prepared for a 30% increase. Shame on you for not caring about your elders, I'm 89, and, and the value that we add to South Windsor community. Encouraging us to stay in our homes helps the budget, but a 30% increase in our taxes drives us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council this evening? Good evening, Mr. Kennedy.
Joe Kennedy, 81, Allison Drive. I wish everyone a happy Independence Day. You may want to donate to your military nonprofit of your choice. Remember, we are the home of the free because of the brave. I support the tax abatement for I support the tax abatement for one fifty-one Buckland Road unit, Continental Global Venture LLC. Housing was a part of the Evergreen Walk original plan. And we, we lost, we lost a lot of stories because we didn't have the, but Evergreen has really taken off. We thank town manager Mike, assistant town manager Scott, town planner Michelle, the zoning board, economic development commission, and other commissions for their good work to reevaluate and grow the Evergreen Walk area. And as always, please support your local businesses, farm stands, and farmers market. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the council this evening on any item on the agenda? Good evening, Ms. Del Nicky.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about agenda item thirteen D, resolution waiving the bidding requirement for purchases of five to twenty-five thousand dollars. The five thousand bidding requirement is in our town charter. Our town charter is the law of the town. The town charter is to the town of South Windsor what the constitution is to the United States. You should not be circumventing the town charter with a resolution. You should do it the right way, even if you must open the charter to resolve the issue. The resolution states that seven four, section seven fourteen is a constraint on the town's ability to achieve cost savings because during the waiver process, supplies disappear, or the opportunity to implement cost savings have changed. This is not a reason to use a resolution to circumvent the law, which is the charter. Since seven fourteen is a constraint, then the Charter Revision Commission should be appointed by the town council to give residents the opportunity to change this section of the charter. A carefully worded amendment to the town charter that included an escalator for inflation would be an honest way to address this issue. Other towns around us have opened their charter, and the sky has not fallen around them. Now, I can understand a short-term resolution of this type to go forward with the promise and commitment opening the charter. This promise would not be binding to the next council, but empowering the next council to do the right thing. If the resolution goes forward tonight, please amend it to commit the town to forming a Charter Revision Commission to properly address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the council on any item on the agenda? Please come forward. There's a little button on the base of the microphone. When you hit it, the microphone will turn red. There you go.
Hi, I'm Deborah Godette. I live at fifty Bayberry Trail. I'm in, I have the same part of the agenda item to talk about. I am a little bit in a different frame of mind because I look at laws differently. The way I'm looking at it, section forty-three A, fifty-three A, states that the Commissioner Administrative Services may perform, including but not limited to, the following issuing requests for bids or proposals, selecting the successful bidder. I don't know why you would want to give away our rights as a town to pick our own contractual entity. Why would you want to give that away? If I, I apologize if you've been doing it right along. I understand you can look at the state and see what their bid process is, what they have, but you're talking about saving time, saving money. This is not saving money by putting another monkey wrench where you have to go to the state to ask them, and this person is going to be able to make any successful bidder that they want. We may not agree with that. There may be someone that we know, that we have an issue with, that they didn't. And I think you're giving away town authority. I don't agree with that, and I think this does that. The other problem is that twenty-five thousand dollars is not, I think it actually could be lower than that. I think anything over ten thousand should still go out to bid. Anytime you want to save a penny is going to save tax money. That's not a good enough reason to not go out to bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kathy Doherty. I live at twelve Roy Road. Tax bills are out, and of course, social media is jumping, and people are terribly upset over the huge increase that we are all faced with. The residential grand list went up thirty-three percent, while businesses and industry real estate went up only eleven percent. There's a huge push by this council to keep adding commercial buildings to this town. But why? Being as the residents are paying more than their fair share of taxes, either through abatements or for the unbalanced taxes that residents are facing. Our cars have been taxed at the maximum allowed by state, and South Windsor had the largest budget increase of any surrounding town, and as far as I can tell, the largest budget increase in the state of Connecticut. But there is another concern that does not seem to be getting much press or attention, and seems to be being swept under the rug. The state, in an effort to make this state affordable, created a statute that imposes a spending cap for all towns. At the last council meeting, the town manager informed us that we had bad news. The town of South Windsor was being or could be fined for, for budgeting over the spending cap. When the mayor asked, well, how much are we over? The answer was vague, like, I don't know, two million dollars. There is a penalty that is imposed on us, and when I mean us, I mean the residents of the town of South Windsor, of over a quarter million dollars. Is this penalty a monthly penalty? Is it a one-time fee? No one asked for further clarification, and again, it does not seem to be getting the attention it deserves. My question, and I understand that no one will be answering this tonight, is we have a town attorney that we pay significant dollars to, that should be making sure that the letter of the law is followed for the state. We have a town manager. No one knew or realized that there was a state statute, or was it ignored? This council approved a budget that went against the state statute that will cost this town money. Who is responsible for that? When is this town going to have this transparent so we know what this oversight is going to cost the taxpayer? And who is going to be held accountable for it? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the council this evening on any item on the agenda? Anyone else from the public? Third time, anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone. Mr. Maniscalco, could you shut that microphone off, please? Moving on, Council Lopez, adoption of the minutes of previous meeting, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Adoption of minutes of previous meetings, be it resolved that South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular town council meeting of June twenty, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone on the council with any deletions, corrections, additions, anything to the minutes? Not seeing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries, thank you. I'm sorry, an abstention. Could we get a roll call, please?
Counselor Lidecker. Deputy Mayor King.
Yes.
Mayor Pendleton.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Kibaski.
Yes.
Counselor Evans.
Yes.
And the motion carries, thank you. And now, moving on to item number nine, communications from liaison officers, boards directly responsible to the council. Capital projects. I'd like to ask Mr. Roberts if he'd like to come up and just talk about capital projects a little bit, what we did and where we're at, if we can talk about that. We approved, and it's going up to Ms. Patty Perry. Come on up. Our budget. Go ahead.
Yes, we, we met as a team and went over the three point three million dollar request that was approved as part of the budget. We outlined a number, and I wish I'd known I was going to speak, I would have had those with me, but we outlined a number of projects that we had already predetermined were in a priority list. We went down through that list and then funded up to that three point three million dollars, with the exception of a friendly amendment to pull a hundred thousand dollars out of the ADA fund to fund the internal GIS project for the buildings, which will aid and support the ADA plan being completed and documented. So we did pass it forward to Patty Perry, who is putting it in the, into munis for the fiscal year coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
You're welcome.
That's our report on capital projects. You did that very well. Thank you. And then we have the inland wetlands agency, Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a meeting, well, they have a meeting, excuse me, on Wednesday at seven, so there's nothing important until then.
Thank you. And moving on, I have Ms. Daria Plummer here from the Patriotic Commission, who can eloquently come up and speak better than I can about what the Patriotic Commission's activities are going on.
I don't know if I'm going to speak more eloquently than you, but I will certainly speak on behalf of the Patriotic Commission. I'm Daria Plummer. I live at two thirty-five Orchard Hill Drive, and I have come before you previously on many items, but often for the Patriotic Commission, and I'm doing so again tonight. And I want to thank you very, very much for this opportunity. I decided to do a little research about Patriotic Commissions before I wrote my few comments. So I Googled Connecticut Patriotic Commissions. And I will tell you that we are, I believe, the premier Patriotic Commission in the state of Connecticut. There is more information on Google about the South Windsor Patriotic Commission than most other communities, if not all of the communities in town, in the state. And I will tell you that there is a handful, just a handful of Patriotic Commissions that I could find. By a handful, I mean seven, and that includes a monument commission from a nearby community. That doesn't mean the state is not patriotic. That does not mean town councils everywhere do not honor our veterans and different Patriotic holidays. But we are unique in the state in the fact that you fiscally support us and you physically support us in all that we do. So tonight, I want to thank you on behalf of the entire Patriotic Commission for all this support, and not just you, but we could not do what we do without town departments, town businesses, different organizations, including the American Legion Post one thirty-three, and different individuals within our community. We have many programs that I'm going to talk about very, very briefly, but all people help us willingly and competently. And I have to give shout-outs and kudos to the Park and Recreation, Public Works, our police department, our fire department, our public schools, and nearly every department within this building, because I've called almost every one of them, and everybody is lovely to me. I don't know what they say afterwards, but they're lovely to me. Everybody has a role in patriotism, and this community is immensely, immensely supportive. To that end, I want to give a special shout-out now to Park and Rec, which on Sunday, July twenty-third, will host veterans and their immediate families from South Windsor and any surrounding community who wish to come and enjoy a day at the pool. But they've done this in the past, but they're doing something differently this year, which I think is just wonderful. They have invited the Patriotic Commission to be part of it, but any other military-related or veteran-related group who would like to can also be there to, from twelve to three, just to hand out information or to answer any questions. So a huge shout-out to our town and all our departments and to Park and Rec, especially for this upcoming July twenty-third. A little history lesson, we were established by ordinance in nineteen eighty-seven to accommodate and foster pride and patriotism among the citizens of South Windsor, and to demonstrate evidence thereof through the development and the conduct of programs and activities. We have, over the years, developed how many commissioners we have. We have ten commissioners and two alternates, but I must say, we don't have ten commissioners and two alternates. We have twelve commissioners who are dedicated to the work of the Patriotic Commission for South Windsor. And like all boards and commissions within the town, once a board and commission is established and meets, they are one, and I think that is a compliment to this community. Our duties are defined as studying and developing plans for programs and activities related to national and state holidays, and it also includes town celebrations, including and commemorating and, and or honoring the nation, state, or town, its history and culture, including military and other units, and citizens or officials thereof. And I think that's, that inclusivity is very, very important. We make recommendations to you, and we have over the decades, and you have approved them, and we have our programs in place, but we alter every now and then. But I want to share this because there are people listening, there are people behind me, and there are people who will go and read the minutes and, and view the video of this. And I think it's important for people in South Windsor to know that we are on the town website, which is a wonderful website, and under boards and commissions, you can find everything you want to know about the Patriotic Commission or any board and commission in the town. And I think that is extremely, extremely important. As you know, and you honored on June fifth, we have a poster and essay contest, and you congratulated the winners on that evening. We have recently concluded Armed Forces Day. Unfortunately, we were rained out, but the good news is we are investigating whether or not, going forward, we can have a rain date. But we, again, recently concluded our Memorial Day Parade, our ceremony at VMP, Veterans Memorial Park, and very shortly thereafter, there was the flag retirement ceremony, held also at VMP. And I want you to know, like many communities, and our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts have stepped up, we have collection boxes at the community center, the town hall, the public library. People can retire their used home flags, and once a year, at a ceremony, an official ceremony, the flags are burned appropriately, and the ashes are buried, which I think is extremely important, and this year they will be buried with last year's ashes at VMP. But I want to say this. The calendar of events and the ordinance are related. We don't exist in isolation, but we exist in conjunction with all town departments and the businesses, as I've mentioned earlier, and we exist for the town. That means we would like as much town participation at some of our events that we have, whether we have a ceremony for Veterans Day, whether we have veterans in the schools, whether we have the Memorial Day Parade or Memorial Day Ceremony at VMP. We encourage town residents to come out and be part of what we are offering our community. So anyone who is listening or reads the minutes or what have you, if you would like to be a part of the community activities that we provide, and by town ordinance, we're allowed to have advisors or helpers, I'm going to urge you to contact the mayor's office. Other people have done that, and the mayor always puts the emails right back to the Patriotic Commission, and we're very deeply appreciative. But please know that we can always use help specifically, like Armed Forces Day or on the parade, maybe some people would like to be, be in the parade, or there may be veterans who would like to come and speak at the high school and middle school on, you know, right close to Veterans Day, or perhaps someone listening or reading knows of a veteran who should be honored with our banner program. We're here for you, and I, and I, I want to thank you for that, but I want to close with this very personal story that happened two hours ago. I call up someone, and I have for nine and a half years, through human services, human, it's a telephone reassurance program, for people who may not have someone to speak to every day. She is the widow of a military veteran in the, in this community, and she's lived almost all her life here. And she was mentioning, as we chatted way back when, that Memorial Day was coming, and she was so hoping that the flag, which the Patriotic Commission puts on and she was so hoping that the flag, which the Patriotic Commission puts on every military grave through the, uh, town Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts every single year, flags that you provide for us because you fund us for that. She said, "I just hope it'll stay." I said, "Well, you know, we can get you a bronze holder through the American Legion." And I made a phone call, and it came, the bronze holder, and the flag is the, in there for the amount of time that it's allowed to be every single year. I mention that because tomorrow is the Fourth of July. And she said through tears, and every time she mentions her husband, who's at Wapping Cemetery, whom she used to be able to go visit, and she cannot any longer, but other people visited and send her pictures, she says, "I'm so appreciative. It's so meaningful to me." So I share that story because it's true, happened two hours and five minutes ago, and it's, it happens because of your support. So I want to thank you. Please know that the Patriotic Commission is deeply, deeply appreciative of everything you do for us in this town. So thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Other than that, I'll go sit down.
Thank you, Ms. Plummer. We have the Planning and Zoning, Council Kozakowski is not here this evening. Economic Development Commission, do we have anyone for there to report on that? No? And then we have the Mass Transit Highway Advisory, Council Evans.
Thank you. The, uh, Mass Transit Highway Advisory Commission met on Tuesday, June 27th. Um, Jeff Dolittle attended. He is the liaison to the, um, CROG Transit. Um, he was, they had a great conversation, um, moving forward. He, the commission sees him as a great resource and a great relationship. Um, they are very thankful for his commitment to keeping the commission in mind as other information and resources become available. Also, the Chair, Karen Wagner, as well as Commissioner Terry Hart are planning to meet with the Town Manager on July 17th, um, just to keep the communication about the commission going and looking at the vision for the commission, as well as projects. Um, they are a little unique in their commission in that their membership only allows them to have a chair. Um, so they had previously discussed how they, um, add a co-chair so that if the chair is not able to attend, that they are still able to meet. So hopefully, we can help them with that.
Thank you, Council Evans. Uh, Deputy Mayor King, please. WPCA.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just want to have a, just a couple of notes. Uh, one, that the WPCA, uh, does not meet in July or August unless they have a special meeting. Um, I just wanted to follow up on the Town Manager, Maniscalco, what he said, uh, only because I think, especially when you're talking about what this town does or does not do in regards to caring about the town's money, I think you, people really need to understand and be careful about what they're making their comments and statements on. I say that to say because the award of a $1.3 million state grant, I don't know if people understand grants. Grants means you don't have to pay that back. And the fact that the WPCA got that money, uh, even though it only covers 50% of the projected costs, um, they went after that. And I did want to make sure that I sent out some congratulations to those individuals. Uh, specifically, let me just make sure that I have it. So I don't want to miss anybody who, who put the work in, because we had bipartisan support from the three legislators, but special thanks goes out to Representative Mary Ann Khan, who worked closely with the WPCA to refine the proposal, as well as Senator Saud Anwar, who lobbied with the Bond Committee, Bond Commission, and Governor pushed the grant through. Uh, also, uh, specific thanks to Jeff LaMay, Plant Supervisor, and Tony Manfree, the Superintendent of the Pollution Control, for the efforts to develop the plan, track down the odor reports from residents, and oversee the work that has already been done. Also want to make, uh, special mention to the residents, uh, specifically on Main Street for making aware, uh, the WPCA of the odor, of the issues, and saying, and really just keeping their foot, uh, on the gas pedal in regards to making sure that not only did they get the money, but also that, um, it goes to the things that they need so that they're not smelling the different odors and so on and so forth. So if anybody does have any questions, you can definitely reach out to Stephen Wagner, who is the Chair of the, uh, WPCA. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, item 11.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to add that the Human Relation Commission is not on the list because they did hold a special meeting, um, to transfer their remaining funds to support Human Services that has a need for women, uh, feminine hygiene products. Um, so they wanted to support that by transferring their money to support Human Services. So also an appeal to the community, if you are looking to make any donations, they are in need of feminine hygiene products as well. So something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item 11 is Consent agenda, 11A, first reading, there is none. 11B, Council Kobaski, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 11B, Resolution Appointing Maria Basile as a Member of the South Windsor Arts Commission. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Maria Basile as a Member of the South Windsor Arts Commission to fill a vacancy for a term ending December 31st, 2023.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. Thank you. Item number 12, Unfinished Business Discussion Item, Updates on the Warehouse and Housing Moratorium. Mr. Jeff Fulger, please.
Good evening. Um, I was asked to fill in for Michelle to give you folks an update on the, uh, the two moratoriums that were, were set by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we had the moratorium for the Warehouse Distribution Facility, um, and also a moratorium on the residential, uh, residential development, just to hold off a little bit until they were able to establish, uh, regulations for both of those, both of those items. Um, the residential, uh, moratorium ended on March 27th, 2023. Um, there were two, uh, subcommittees that met over the, the course of the year, working on the regulations, um, for the residential portion of, uh, regulations for Planning and Zoning Committee. Um, there was a Single Family Housing Committee and also a Multi-Family Housing Committee that met throughout the year. Um, the Single Family Housing Committee evaluated the quality of developments, particularly open space, cluster designs, and reviewed minimum house lot frontages, sizes, and usability of lots. Um, they looked at undesirable, um, open space, loss of habitats, and also affordable housing. Um, this resulted in minor modifications in the Single Family House Lot Designs, the frontage lot calculation, meaning square footage, of the buildings, buildable square. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but when a, when a, uh, particular, uh, house lot is being proposed for a subdivision, um, they require a 90-foot by 90-foot buildable square to be placed on the lot exclusive of, um, slopes greater than 15% and also for wetlands. So essentially, this creates, uh, a usable area within the lot itself for what would be considered, you know, kind of normal routine, family use, pool, that sort of thing. Um, so they tweaked that a little bit. Um, the, and one of the larger things that, that came out of that was a creation of the, um, exclusionary or inclusionary zoning requirement, uh, which requires an affordable housing payment, uh, for any subdivision that creates three or more lots. And so the fee is going to be determined by the prescribed formula and will be established at the time of the subdivision approval. So the payment will be deposited into the hous- the town's, uh, Housing Trust Fund, and that will be controlled through, um, the newly established Housing Committee. Um, we also had the Multi-Family Housing Committee that met as well. Um, they evaluated the current regulations and proposed changes to incorporate the increase, um, of affordable housing. They investigated changing minimum lot, uh, lot requirements and other bulk requirements um, in different multi-family types. Uh, they reviewed duplex dwellings and also proposed changes to allow more flexibility. Uh, this resulted in a reduction of minimum lot requirements for multi-family developments. Prior to this, uh, the minimum lot requirement was 15 acres for, uh, cluster development or senior housing development. Um, that has been, um, dropped down to five acres for a minimum. So smaller clusters on that. Um, they reintroduced the senior resident development type and modified the multi-family assisted housing regulations and added opportunities for dupa- duplex dwellings. Um, they also had the, uh, created inclusionary zoning requirements, which require the dedication of a certain percentage of the units as affordable in all of the multi-family development types. And the affordability ranges for eight, no, 10 to 18%, depending on the housing type. And then again, that moratorium ended on March 27th, 2023. Uh, regulations were adopted and were revoked on. So those are, those are changes in the zoning regulations. Um, the other moratorium was the Warehouse and Distribution Facility. That moratorium ended on May 28th. There was a warehouse subcommittee that met over the year, working on the regulations. They evaluated land uses, um, the definitions that we have currently or formally in our, uh, zoning, uh, regulations, and, and were changed to include, um, certainly the, like, the distribution facilities, which are somewhat new on the landscape as far as, uh, differentiating them from warehouses. Um, they looked at the, uh, bulk requirements and setbacks, also the per- performance criteria for noise, air pollution, and lighting. Um, the site design criteria considerations, uh, were also looked at, as well as the screening and the buffering requirements. Um, so this resulted in the addition of the definition for the types of units, again, of kind of fine tuning what type of use would, would be called a warehouse, distribution facility, that sort of thing. The application process and location setback requirements for each of those types of uses were then established as well and determined. They set performance criteria for the outlined, for noise, air pollution, and for also, um, off-site lighting. Um, the changes in site design requirements and the review criteria for the traffic being generated as well, um, both for deliveries and obviously, uh, not only just gross deliveries, but also, yes.
I'm going to need to ask you to hold off just for one second, so we can go to our public hearing at 8 o'clock, please. And then we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thanks. So I'd like to suspend the meeting to go ahead and start our public hearing, please. Clerk of the Council.
To be published in the Journal Inquirer, June 9th, 2023, Legal Add Town of South Windsor. Notice is hereby given that the South Windsor Town Council has set Monday, July 3rd, 2023, at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the updated master plan from the Strategic Planning Committee, dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, this 9th day of June, attested to Amanda Palma, Clerk of the Council.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the Council concerning the strategic plan? It's our second public hearing that they requested. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Al Larson, 46, Jake, Saline. And, um, I don't know if this pertains to this, but, um, I'm here to, to make some comments on the Implementation Planning Committee for Recreation and, uh, the, uh, what is going on with that right now. Um, we, when I was in the Park and Rec Commission for 20 years, the last seven as Chair, um, we conducted, um, all our research into the 2020 Master Plan. And the results of that were the fact that we have a plan um, for a, a park and rec, um, recreation center with an indoor pool. And that has recently come up again with the Implementation and Planning Committee. So what I'm here to do tonight is to implore you to final, finalize a configuration for this facility. And the reason for that is because, over the next 60 years, this, this will be one of the, um, most important facilities in town. It'll be one of the most important social and physical facilities in town. And, um, I would hope that you would move on this, the configuration, so that we can have this on a referendum as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Thank you for coming this evening. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the Council during the public hearing this evening about the strategic plan? The floor is open, the microphone is open. Is there anyone else from the public? Third time, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the Council concerning the strategic plan? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Larson. I'm going to close a public hearing, but I'm going to ask for a straw poll. That all in favor of the strategic plan, raise your hand. Thank you. And is there anyone opposed? Not seeing any, that was a straw poll. Thank you very much for attending this evening, and now we'll get back to our regular meeting. Reconvene our regular meeting. Thank you, Mr. Fulger, for that pause. Appreciate him.
So I, again, talking about the Warehouse and Distribution, uh, Facility, uh, the changes in the regulations, um, they modified the screening and buffer requirements as well, increasing buffer requirements along residential and commercial zones, and added, um, wider screening requirements that were all, that were previously done. They also made some provisions to, uh, to accommodate existing businesses. Um, so the I-291 corridor is exempt from any of the separating distance requirements on there. Existing businesses, um, that are already there, um, could expand up to 20% by site plan approval, provided the activity was not any closer to a residential area. Okay? And the buffer requirements, they don't change as well for any industrial lots that already exist on the land records. Some examples that I can give you as far as, um, the, uh, the setbacks for the particular uses, um, warehouses, um, over 40,000 square feet, uh, cannot be, uh, within 500 feet of any zone line, residential zone line. Okay? Um, a trucking facility would be 750 feet from any residential zone line on there. And, um, previously, the, uh, the buffer from an ex- an existing lot that did a butt, a, a industrial or commercial lot that did a butt, a residential zone has been increased from 50, uh, feet to 75 feet on there. And that can be reduced, um, uh, they can, the, the applicant could appeal that to have that reduced back down to 50 if, if the, the situation was, um, is significant enough for that. But, those are the, um, so the, uh, PCC met, uh, had three different, had three public, three nights of public hearings for the, um, the Warehouse and Distribution, uh, Facility changes and the regulations. And there were two public hearings for the residential changes in the regulations. And that's, that's one of the reasons why the moratorium for the Warehouse Distribution Facilities actually lasted a little bit longer than the 12 months, because they were in repeated, uh, public hearings, so they didn't want to close that and, uh, close that down until the public hearings were finished.
Do we have a date that that moratorium is over with? Because you gave us a date of March 27th, 2023 for the housing. When is the warehouse one?
That was May 28th.
May 28th.
Yep, 2023.
Thank you.
And again, those regulations were, um, adapted and approved and are now codified. So the updates are on, on the town website.
Thank you. Does any Councilor have any questions for Mr. Fulger? Council Leidecker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. That was a lot of information. I tried to take a lot of notes, but I think I missed some stuff.
That's okay.
Um, but I guess overall, was there any information provided that would discuss what the anticipate, what these changes will do in our community? I mean, we've heard the residents upset about Talbot Lane, about the, you know, housing that is coming up overcrowding the schools. These changes, do we have any sense if this will limit some of these quote-unquote warehouses being built? Or how? being built or how they're going to affect future housing being built on some of these huge plots of land? Did they discuss any percentages of how it might change things?
Not the percentages, they, I mean, we were able to map out the, when you applied the setbacks, say for the warehouses or the trucking cells, we were able to map out any of the available parcels that were still currently vacant. So those were, we do have them on a map and we can offer that to potential developers, if you will, on that. One of the things, Talbot Lane is kind of a good example of a, kind of a parcel that was kind of overlooked over the course of the last couple of decades as far as development was concerned. So when it did come into play, there was an established residential development adjacent to it. With this, with the setbacks that we have currently, that's unlikely to happen now because, because again, with those large setbacks, there's only a very limited number of large parcels that would be capable of supporting a development like that.
But, and I know Talbot Lane is ongoing litigation, so we can't talk about that aspect of it. However, these regulations won't apply, I don't believe, to that specific proposed development because it would be retroactive from when they filed the lawsuit, correct?
Right.
So they could, if they prevail in court, they could, the town could still be forced to allow them to build outside of these regulations in Talbot Lane, correct? Maybe that's a better question for Mr. Maniscalco?
So essentially, the regulations that are in effect the day that they apply for their application with planning and zoning are the regulations that they need to build within. So Talbot Lane applied, I don't know, it was probably twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Right, so these new changes-
So those regulations then are the ones that dictate how their development goes. These changes will not be able to be imposed upon that development.
So the only way these new changes are effective to say that particular parcel would be is if they lose in court and have to reapply for a new potential development property.
Right.
Okay.
If there was a new application.
Right. And then what about with like the residential housing? Was there kind of the same with the warehouses where there are certain parcels of land that were looked at and determined, okay, instead of a hundred houses going on this parcel, maybe it would now be ninety based on these new regulations? Did they kind of map that out as well?
Yes. Yeah, looking at like some of, for example, some of the, the open space requirements for their, there now is a little bit more weight given to, say, wetlands and setbacks to wetlands as far as creating the actual lots themselves. You, you can't have a lot that's, a building lot that's going to have, you know, sixty percent wetlands on it and you can put a little corner where you stick your house type of a thing. So they'll be looking at that a little bit more, more closely on that. Also, again, the multifamily housing, that max, that minimum lot requirement size has dropped down. So there's probably going to be some parcels that will be more available towards multifamily housing, you know, senior, senior residence developments or whatever, if you're going from a fifteen acre parcel down to a five acre parcel. It'll also mean, it'll mean less units on that particular parcel than would be allowed on a larger one because you're still looking at a certain number of units per acre for density for the multifamily or cluster developments.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Folger? Not seeing any? Thank you for coming out this evening and explaining to this, the upgrades to us with the regulations, and we can find those on the town website on planning and zoning?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, thirteen A, discussion item abandonment of Eight Collins Lane. Mr. Maniscalco, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I am in receipt of a request from a local business for elements who's in the process, I believe they have a purchase and sale agreement in order to purchase that property at Eight Collins Lane. In order to move their business to that location, they're going to be going forward and looking for some type of zone change, but in order to do that, they would need some additional frontage for their property, which would mean that they would need to have the abandonment of the Collins Lane Road that goes in front of their property as well as, what we're also thinking is actually the abandonment of all of Collins Lane from Sand Hill all the way over. I've talked about this with our planner, Michelle Leip, and she thought this was actually a pretty good idea as well as Public Works because Collins Lane is a pretty small little piece of, piece of road that would, is kind of more of a nuisance for maintenance and everything else and would probably benefit us. The idea is if the town were to consider abandoning it, half would go to the Eight Collins Lane property and the other half would end up going to the other property that's on there and essentially it would become their driveways, which basically it is now anyways. This would allow a local business for elements to expand their business and their services to the community, basically making a wellness sanctuary more or less for the community to benefit from. And it would also save us some, some costs associated with managing and maintaining Collins Lane. So if there is a desire to move forward with something like that, we can work on getting a resolution on the agenda at your next meeting, but we wanted to have this discussion item to talk with you a little bit about the idea today.
Is there any questions? Councillor Lydecker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So two things that are sticking out. So one, if we can just back up a bit, we're talking about abandonment. Has that property, Eight Collins Lane, already reverted to the town? Do we own that particular parcel?
Well, no, we don't own Collins Lane. We own the, the road. So there's a, it's kind of-
So they're trying to buy the house and they want the town to give them just a small piece?
The small piece of the road because there's property associated with that house on both sides of the road. So in order to meet the zoning requirements, they need the property to connect so they have the appropriate frontage on the road to be able to become a commercial piece of property that they can then use it for their business.
And so when you say both sides of the road, I'm thinking Collins, so you're talking like where Collins and Nevers Road are. So what's the both sides?
So Collins Lane kind of splits that corner between Sand Hill and I think it's-
Sullivan.
Sullivan at that point, thank you. So there's a small corner that it clips off and basically they need to be able to connect that little small corner together with their property at Eight Collins.
So we're not talking the sledding hill side, we're talking the other side?
Correct, further down towards Sullivan, yeah.
Okay, because I know that's my, that, that's kind of what popped into my head, the amount of people who go sledding there and they don't only take like to the right side of the bridge, there's also another little smaller hill-
Oh, yeah.
And some of the smaller kids go, so I don't want a business kind of encroaching onto that. So you're talking the other side of the house?
This would not encroach on that at all, yeah.
Okay. And we have the authority to just gift them this piece of land or are they purchasing it from us?
Well, so no, if you're abandoning the road, then it, the, the property then becomes part of, the property where the land is, I guess, does get gifted to them more or less if you want to frame it in that way. I don't know what a gift it would be. Essentially, it would become included within their property boundaries more or less.
So if they're purchasing the house, why are we not having them purchase this portion of property?
That has not been asked yet. We could certainly go back to them and ask them to purchase it from us if that's the case. I would suggest if we were to do that, we would have to probably spend the money on an appraisal, which, to be very honest, an old road probably is not going to be worth all that much. And from the tax benefits associated with helping out a local business, I think it benefits all of us, not to mention the savings associated with giving up a dilapidated road.
And what was gifted, given to us in our packet with regards to, I'm assuming this is with regards to Collins Road, what was, because I was trying to read through this, what is the, what is this telling us? Or is this something different and not part of Collins Road? Collins Lane, my apologies.
Thought I had it here somewhere.
Everything to me is a road.
Yeah. So my understanding is there were some efforts at one point to try to abandon Collins, Collins Lane, I think it is, or Collins Road. It's not really clear why this became just a paper road and I think as a result, it's kind of got us into this conundrum where we are now. So more or less, it could potentially be looked at as we're doing a bit of a housekeeping measure to try to follow through with what had originally been thought. It's kind of up to the council and with how you want to move forward and if we do have the desire to try to support a local business.
And do we think that the cost of that property would exceed the cost of the appraisal? Or do we think the cost of that property would be about equal to the cost of an appraisal?
I mean, from a cost standpoint, you're probably talking about twenty-six feet wide and less than an eighth of a mile long. It's, it would never be considered a buildable lot and it really would have zero value to anybody else other than potentially this one piece of property that would be going into this, doing this business. You're probably going to spend four to five thousand dollars for an appraisal to tell you that it's going to not really have a whole lot of value.
I mean, I struggle with zero value. I mean, it's still money that's saving our, I mean, it's still money towards our taxpayers, essentially. I mean, we just basically did something on Main Street where we lost money essentially there by, I think we gave a tax break or some sort of waiver to a potential contractor purchasing a house on Main Street. And now you're asking us again to kind of give town property to somebody for no cost. So all of these dollars start adding up when we look at, I mean, we hear people coming in today about a thirty percent tax increase and now all of this is adding up and it's still money that should be going back to our taxpayers that we're not getting for them.
So that was never done.
So I think that's my concern.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That was never done. That was something that was being proposed by that resident and the developer that was coming forward. It's my job to bring those forward to you, not to just say, no, they're not, any value to them at all. So that was never done and it was with the intent of redeveloping a historic piece of property. This is another opportunity that I think we could bring forward to all of you that would potentially support a local business, you know, so. But it is at the discretion of what the town council wants to do.
Understood, thank you.
Councillor Evans?
Thank you. I think that Councillor Lydecker's questions helped me understand some of my questions. I guess in looking at the information provided to us, I think that would have, what would have been really helpful is there's a map referenced a couple times in here that would have been very helpful to kind of understand what this project looked like, as well as on the backside, it talks about the construction plans. Is this the map? Thank you. As well as the construction plans referenced on the back. So I think if I'm understanding this correctly, the town bought property from the Porter family-
No.
From the Collins family for one dollar. It says here, bought for one dollar. Whereas the town is acquiring portion of land, deed said land to the town for the sum of one dollar. That is in the one, two, third paragraph.
Yep, I got you.
And I believe, based on what I read this, I don't know this for a fact, but I believe that that property was basically to buy property to create a driveway, correct? Why, what did we need access to?
I think it was access to those two homes is my understanding. I mean, from looking at, from what I can understand of what's there, the only thing that Collins Lane is doing is providing access to two homes. Why the town spent a dollar on it at that time is not exactly explained to me, nor is it really understood, and I believe our planning department doesn't really understand. I can tell you that, for whatever reason, it's an artifact that we're, that we're left withholding. It is, to be very honest, when looking at managing a municipality, plowing a road for two homes, maintaining a road for two homes and continuing to provide to add access to them, when really it's a glorified driveway rather than a road, I think it's warrants our ability to possibly give that property, or to abandon that, that road.
I think I'd want to understand this better, the intent of why we purchased it for one dollar, because it talks about transplanting one small oak tree, scarcify that portion of pavement that will be abandoned, provide access to the Porter-Collins driveway, make application to the state of Connecticut for a driveway permit, restore all disturbed area to a condition better than or equal to original.
I can certainly conduct some more research on it and see what I can bring to you. I mean, this is kind of all we've got at this red hot moment, but if you're not, I mean, I was looking more, is this something that you're interested in doing or not? So if you are interested in it, I can certainly conduct that in, that research and expend some additional staff resources on it.
Can you describe this map to us so I can better understand what I'm looking at? So the, the darkened portion versus the-
Just like you don't have it in your packet, I didn't get a copy myself, so.
Did you flip over the other document because there's another visual on the back?
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you flip it over, there's one on the back.
So essentially, if you look on here, you can see this is Eight Collins. This is the driveway slash road. The town staff, well, the, the business owner is saying they would appreciate us to abandon this little section that's been squared off. The town staff has recommended that we abandon the entire road, which impacts both this house that's in the corner down here as well as this house up here. So essentially, it would be divided in half. This piece of the road would go to this house and this piece of the road would go to this one.
I guess they overall don't see an issue with abandoning it to them. I just, I guess I'd like to understand the initial intent better. Why did the town want to put a driveway in there? Is there some reason? Was it to access something else that we no longer need to access?
Yeah, I, I don't know myself at this point. I know we've asked and I've talked with Michelle Leip, she's done some initial looking. She hasn't been able to find something, you know, like I said, I don't want to expend a ton of resources on it unless there's really a desire to move forward, and if there is, we can certainly do that. I can't, on the front cover of this, see any reason why they wanted to gain access to anything else over there besides those two homes.
Is this a private road or a town? Like are we plowing this road and maintaining this road?
Yes, it's a town road. So you plow it, you maintain it.
I know, I guess I'm left with more questions than answers is my concern.
Thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor King?
Yeah, the only one that I have is, so this is the doctor that has the facility right next to Mitchell Fuel.
Correct.
Okay. Just so that we know what we're talking about because he's currently here. When is he looking for some type of, I see the dates of June twenty-second and June twenty-third, when is he looking for some type of answer, feedback?
I explained to him that I was going to bring this to all of you at tonight's meeting as a discussion item, and if you were interested in it, we would bring something forward to you to have further discussion and review for like a resolution at your next meeting with the intent that maybe if you were comfortable, you would act on it at your end of July meeting. If not, then we would be talking about September, to which I got, thank you very much, and we'll see you.
Okay, just so he's aware of a, of a timeline.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Not seeing any, thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. I guess we'll get back to you with any questions. Should we email them to you?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to new business, we did thirteen A. Thirteen B will be the added, okay, the corrected, is that what it is? Nope, thirteen B, got you. Councillor Kaba- Counselor Kowalski, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 13B, resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the design and installation of sidewalks along Birch Hill Drive and connecting to existing nearby sidewalks on Felt Road. Be it resolved at the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Monday, July 17th, 2023 at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the design and installation of sidewalks along Birch Hill Drive and connecting to existing nearby sidewalks on Felt Road.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. Thank you, the motion carries. 13C, Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, resolution accepting the resignation of Andrew Paterna from the South Windsor Town Council. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby accepts with regret the resignation of Andrew Paterna from the South Windsor Town Council effective June 26, 2023 at 11:00 AM. And be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council extends its thanks to Andrew Paterna for the time he has dedicated to serving the community of South Windsor by his participation on the town council.
Is there a second? And any discussion? Everybody wants to say something, go right ahead. Counselor Kowalski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Much like Counselor Gamble's resignation last meeting, I was tempted to vote no to keep Counselor Paterna on here, but totally understand this is a personal decision that he's made. Um, I have enjoyed serving with Andy. Again, like with, with Jamie, it's been an honor and a privilege. Um, I've had the honor of working with Counselor Paterna even before I came on the council in various, in various ways. Um, and it's always been a pleasure to deal with, with him. Um, so I wish him the best of luck and I'm very, very sorry to see him go. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Evans.
Thank you. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, Andy is watching, um, cause I would love to be saying these words to him in person, um, that I'm, I'm very sad to see him go. I completely respect and understand his decision. Um, but you know, my time serving, um, our town has not been without Counselor Paterna. Um, so this is new to not have him by our side and he's always been a, and a great leader, um, advisor, person to lean on. Um, and just to talk to you in an open ear, he's had, done great things for our town. Um, he was a great leader and I, I really respect him and his decision, but he will really, really be missed. So thank you for your service, Andy.
Counselor Lydecker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to digress for a minute since I wasn't here at the last meeting and I just want to thank, um, Counselor Gamble for his time that he served. Um, I truly appreciated that we became mixed here at the council table, cause Jamie was my partner in crime sitting next to me. Um, we had plenty of times whispering about what was going on, on the agenda and questions and just getting to know him and his family information. So, um, he will be missed. Um, he was a voice of reason on our council, so I do want to extend my thanks to him. Um, and it's sad to see him go, but understandable. As for Andy, I have been on this council for almost five years and Counselor Paterna has been here this entire time. Um, he became mayor shortly after I was appointed to the council. And whether you agreed with his viewpoints on how to run this council or what he brought to the town, I don't think anybody can state that he was not dedicated, he was not passionate, he was not determined. Um, the amount of time that he spent and energy that he spent was, was unparalleled and unmatched. Um, I've never seen somebody just put so much into the town that they're in and that they loved. Um, he was always there for questions and a sounding board and it's truly with a heavy heart that, um, I have to vote yes to accept his resignation on this. He, he was a staple in South Windsor and he will truly, truly be missed and I wish him the best moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, uh, said so far about, uh, Counselor Paterna, um, I met Counselor Paterna also many years ago and he has been a mentor on, on many aspects of life, not just on, on the municipality, uh, items. And, um, I'm, I'm going to miss him a lot. He has been a friend outside and inside of the council and I wish him the best.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, like everyone else, if it wasn't for Andy, I probably would not have been, uh, part of the WPCA. I remember, uh, only because we know several people at Manchester Community College. And, uh, when I reached out to the people that I knew and they said, oh no, Andy's a cool dude, you can go and have a conversation with him. And I was like, alright, but that cat's the mayor. And they're like, no, he's alright. And I was like, alright, cool. And he showed up with his hat and I thought that was pretty cool, a mayor with a South Windsor hat and he wore that everywhere. Um, and so he was just very down to earth. And I remember him saying to me, if you want to get involved, because I asked him about the diversity and, and all those different things in regards to South Windsor and the town government, he said, you can get involved with the WPCA and with the inland wetlands. And I said, what the heck is that? And he's like, well, if you're going to learn, they're the best people to learn from because they're the oldest and the, the best as far as how they handle themselves in their different committees and commissions. So I said, okay, cool. And I got involved and that was the beginning, the rest is history. And now I'm sitting here. Um, he will be missed. He was only a phone call away, uh, but best to him, uh, and his family, because obviously I know that was a difficult decision for him to make. But, um, like so many times that we say even here, because even as a town council, we're a family, we don't always agree. Uh, we get into each other's nerves from time to time, but family first. And, uh, that is what he is doing. And so, Andy, piece two fingers.
Thank you. Uh, last but not least, um, I regrettably accept this resignation. It's cause life is about choices and you have to make choices for yourself and your family. I totally support former mayor and former council member Andrew Paterna's resignation. It breaks my heart and saddens my heart that he leaves us. Um, awesome mayor, awesome counselor, started the farmer's market, worked diligently on the farmer's market, made so many changes within this community on preserving the farmland, working on the priest property, so many hours that he gave to our community. And Andy, I just want to say thank you, buddy, for being there for all the hours that we've spent on the phone together and working so closely together, um, to move South Windsor forward. And you will be truly missed on this council, truly. Um, and I wish you and your family the best and whatever decisions that you need to make and support you 100%. Thank you. Now we'll take a vote. All those in favor? We're not excited about that, are we? No. Any opposed? Not hearing any. Thank you, the motion carries. Moving on to 13D, Counselor Kozakowski, please. And he's not here, Counselor Kowalski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 13D, resolution waiving the bidding process. Whereas Connecticut General Statute 4A-53A allows the Commissioner of Administrative Services to serve as the contracting agent for a group of three or more municipalities that seek to purchase supplies, materials or equipment upon the request of such group, provided that, one, the commissioner determines that the group will achieve a cost savings through the commissioner, serving as the contracting agent. And two, such cost savings are greater than the administrative costs to the state. And whereas Connecticut, Connecticut General Statute 7-148VB allows the town of South Windsor to purchase equipment, supplies, materials or services from the list of eligible entities listed in the statute. And whereas the town is constrained in its ability to purchase equipment, supplies, materials pursuant to the town charter, section 714. And whereas pursuant to section 714, the town has a $5,000 cap on purchases without the town manager inviting sealed bids or proposals or getting the town council to waive such bidding process. And whereas section 714 is a constraint on the town's ability to achieve cost savings because during the waiver process, supplies disappear or the opportunity to implement cost savings has changed. And whereas the town council has determined that requiring sealed bids for purchases greater than $5,000 is not in the best interest of the town, now therefore be it resolved, not that notwithstanding section 714, the town council authorizes the town manager to participate with the state of Connecticut contracting programs for the purchase of supplies, materials or equipment pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 4A-53A. Be it therefore resolved that notwithstanding section 714, the town council authorizes the town manager to purchase equipment, supplies, materials or services from the list of eligible entities listed in Connecticut General Statute 7-148VB. Further resolved that notwithstanding section 714, the town council has determined that the $5,000 threshold requiring sealed bids for the purchase of equipment, supplies or materials is an impediment to the efficient operations of the town as in, and is not in the best interest of the town and hereby authorizes the town manager to waive the bidding requirements for the purchase of equipment, supplies or materials for contracts valued at $25,000 or less for the remainder of the fiscal year. Further resolved that nothing in this resolution shall abrogate the provisions of Charter section 1001, require, requiring disclosure of financial interests by any elected or appointed town official, board or commission member or employee.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Comments? Okay. Deputy Mayor King.
No, I was just, uh, second, uh, good reading, sir.
Good reading, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Minasko? Counselor Lydecker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I believe the last time this came up, I had grave reservations about this. It's outside of the charter, we're not discussing opening the charter, which I think we need to do if we move forward with this. Um, but I want to get specifically to an email that I had asked you to send, um, about some of the projects that this applied to since we passed it, I think it was last fall. And the list you sent, um, I'm hoping you can give some additional information about cause I'm extremely concerned. I am looking on page, I don't know, it's on my phone, so I'm not sure. Couple pages in, and I see C.H. Nickerson and Co., Inc., $552,345. I'm seeing Grant Tech, Inc., $114,050. EverSource, $60,000. Um, Barton and LeJudas, $50,000. Gengris Ford, twice, the same amount, $89,000. I'm hoping that's an error that we paid them the exact same amount twice. Um, Mount Southington, $30,000. These are all amounts over the $25,000. I mean, we've got one for half a million dollars. So can you explain how this list applies to this, specifically some of the numbers I just read? And why some of these costs, especially this Nickerson and Co. for half a million dollars, did not come to the council? Cause this list to me is concerning.
So, um, the way the bidding process, well, a couple of things. First of all, so we were asked for both, uh, information related to, uh, things that went out to bid, things that went out to quote, and then things that went out for, uh, purchase off of government contracts, et cetera. So if you look all the way to the far right where it says source, you could see that things were quoted, they were bid out, they were put out to RFP, they were put out for state contract, they were purchased off of the Connecticut, the Capital Region Council of Governments. Um, so there were multiple ways that all those things were purchased. I can't find the exact one that you referenced related to half a million dollars, but I'm going to, um, go off of the idea and I'm fairly confident in doing that and saying that that was bid out. The way the bidding process in the town of South Windsor has worked prior to even myself being here is that items of whatever dollar amount are typically put out to bid and the, and they are awarded to the lowest qualified bidder. Once staff review the, um, actual bids that come in to determine qualification, they are then awarded to those individuals. They don't come to the town council for approval. Your approval occurs when you approve the budget on an annual basis.
So this cost for $500,000 and it looks like, where to go? So that one appears to be, if I'm reading this right, page four?
Counselor Lydecker?
Yes.
One second, we're getting documents. And you may, may be able to read it off of that.
Uh, no, it's page four, according to what's highlighted on my phone right now. Um, page four, second to last line. Um, there's a date here, 4/19/2023, at an amount of $552,345. But there's no other additional identifying information with that. So what was that? How is that included in this list here about waiving the bidding process for $25,000 or less? I'm still not clear on...
No, the, the request was not just for all items, $25,000 or less. It was purchases that were made with RFPs, purchases that were made with quotes and purchases that were made from the Capital Region Council of Governments or state contracts. So it was everything, not just five and 25.
Okay, that was not my request. So when I made the request at the meeting, my request was just the projects that this applied to from when we passed it in the fall to now.
Correct. We had multiple requests from multiple people, so we had to, we combined them together. If you would like, we can call out just your request and we can provide you with that additional report at another time.
I mean, before...
Your, your request is combined within all these others, if that's it.
And it's unfortunate that it wasn't delineated as to what was what, because based on what I'm seeing here, I'm not voting yes for this. I'm extremely concerned that we're going outside the charter. I'm extremely concerned that there's no discussion about reopening the charter. I get the concern, we can't piecemeal open the charter. We have to open everything to get to this. But until I can see exactly as I requested, what was under the $25,000 and where all that came from, I, I'm not going to usurp the charter and continue on with this because I don't know if it was productive or not and I don't have the information that was provided, um, to determine if it wasn't. So I, I'm going to express again my grave reservations on this. I don't think we go up to $25,000. I don't think we violate the charter and, um, yeah, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We're just looking over the document that was just handed to us at this time.
Just for informational purposes, since, um, there was some questions about the opening the charter, just to make sure everybody, again, is on the same page, that would be an action taken by the council. It's an 18-month review. Um, you would have to create a charter revision commission to, uh, to do that. You would charge them with certain specific things to review, like the purchasing section in the charter, and then they would come back to you with recommendations. It's your job to accept or reject those recommendations and then it's your job, it's your job to put it on a referendum or not.
Okay, Mr. Minasko, thank you for that. The way that we're looking at this document right here in front of us, all, all these pages should be laying out next to each other?
Yeah, they, I, I believe so. It doesn't print out very well.
Is that the way that we should be reading this? Cause I'm seeing, Counsel, jump in. Yeah, jump in.
If you're looking at Mount Southington ski rental and then it's not the next page applied to it, so if you put it to the following page, you'll see the high school rental and Timothy Edwards rental.
Oh, the ski club?
If you rip off the first page and line them up.
Okay.
So you can kind of, every other page applies.
And so the dollar amount that you're referencing to, like Grant Tech, is that what you're referring to? $114,000?
And with regards to the one for...
Oh, Nickerson, you said.
Yeah, so that's on, technically on this second page printed.
Yep. And then that would fall over to here?
So I guess that would be, versus, essentially of...
An RFP at WPCA.
I think, isn't it actually professional?
Under the professional count, it's the second one up from the bottom. So if you, I, I suppose, if you follow the second one up from the bottom from all three pages, then it would line up.
I think so. So it'd be professional. It's like the fourth one, to get permission and install, create, carry or DS, WPCA, $114,000. And that says quote.
I think I'm confused too. Uh, Counselor Evans, go ahead.
So if you rip the first page off?
Yeah.
You should be able to match up. Page one?
Three, five.
Thank you, what did I? So I ripped off first page and I flipped it over. So it, it matches up. So it matches up. The last page is the one that's going to be hard to read because it's back and front. But if you...
Like this? Oh, flipped over.
Look at it like this.
Yep.
They match.
Okay.
And if you flip it, they'll match. So the one that Counselor Lydecker is talking about, C.H. Nickerson, is professional. So it says professional. Nope, that's not right either. I take that back.
And with my page, like on the first page, we want to report five down Venture Communications, January twenty-five, ninety-three, eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Then you look at that page, where you want to report five down, it should be giving the number.
It should be three pages across. So like...
Yep, yep.
So like the top row would be professional, three, five, one, one, five, three, zero, zero. The second one would be Mount Southington Ski Area, and the third one would be South Windsor High School Ski Club Rentals, Lasts. So there are three across.
Yep. So pages like two, four, six, and pages one, three, five?
Yeah, so Counselor Lydecker is correct. It is furnished and installation of...
Whatever. Okay. So now that we have the papers laid out correctly, Counselor Evans, do you have questions?
I think that I answered my own question.
Okay, then. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Lydecker, go ahead.
So if that's the way we're reading this, then again, I'm going to go back and say, what's the purpose of this resolution? Because if I'm looking at the source, the only one that's indicated council waived bidding for contractor is this Venture Communications for eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Everything else is telling me, quote, state contract, RFP, bid, CROG bid. So according to this, if it's correct, the, we only use this one time in six months, but now you're asking for us to do it again essentially indefinitely?
No, that was a project we came to you specifically with a bid waiver. So that was, for whatever reason, when we went into our MUNA system, that one was captured because it had a bid waiver that was approved by the town council. All the other ones that say quote, so if you look at, now I'm all mixed up, but there were a number of them in the beginning, so you got like the T-Mobile, I think there's, we did the venture of Vulcan Security Technologies, or Petricelli and Associates. I believe those all say quote next to them, if I remember correctly.
Vulcan appears to be state contract.
Okay, you're correct. Trying to see if I can find one. Flotek Inc. for ten, two thirty-two.
That says quote.
Right?
So are you saying that everything that says quote is one of the purchases essentially that we automatically waived the bidding process on because it was over five but under twenty-five?
It should be. It should be. Mine are not lining up correctly.
But we don't know because that doesn't actually say that in the source.
I'm sorry, say that last part again.
We don't actually know that because it doesn't say that in the source.
Yeah, I, I'm having a hard time lining mine up personally, but that's the way it should be lining up. I mean, this report is meant to be looked at on a computer. Unfortunately, it didn't print out appropriately.
Right, but quote doesn't necessarily mean that that's one of the items that fell into this six-month period of over five, under twenty-five. So again, I still don't have the answers to what I asked for with regards to what projects fell in that over five, under twenty-five.
Okay.
So would you like to, Counselor Lydecker? Seeing that we had to piece everything together and understanding this, this is here as a resolution right now? Would you like to postpone this resolution until we can get further information?
I will defer to the rest of the council. I'm going to vote no on this as of today with the information that I have, but I will defer to the rest of the council if they wish to table it for more information or if they want to move forward with a vote.
Go ahead.
I'd support holding off on this and looking at it once we have more accurate information on which items were actually, based on the waived portion by the council. I also will just say I do support the, the idea of opening the charter. I do think it is something we need to do. I do know, like town manager mentioned, that it is an eighteen-month process, so whether we do, like, was mentioned previously in public input by Ms. Delneke, and we make a statement ourselves requesting that the next council do so, or whether we as a council commit to doing it in the next term. I think it is something that is important that we need to do for South Windsor and just updating our charter.
Thank you. And Counselor Kabaski?
Thank you, just a couple of things. I believe it was Counselor Gamble's request to have the expanded list, and I don't remember what his reasoning was behind it. He just, if I can jump in.
Go ahead, head.
The reason that he wanted it was basically he just wanted to make sure that we weren't just throwing out, was it baby with the bathwater in regards to everything that we were purchasing? He wanted to see, okay, what stuff have we made RFPs on as opposed to what stuff, to Counselor Lydecker's point, that we're just saying that it doesn't need to have an RFP? Okay, and, and just one point of clarification for Counselor Lydecker. It's not in, in perpetuity. It, it says right in here, this is only going to go to the end of the fiscal year. So it's not like, if we vote on this, it's going to continue on just for the, in this fiscal year.
And so I think I'd like to also ask for more information that's coming back. I will be asking for a resolution to table this for us to gather more information. And including in that information, I would like for the town attorney to submit his original resolution and how and where this came about, that we can legally do this if it states that we can't do this in our charter. So I know the town attorney wrote up the original resolution to be able to do this.
Yeah, so the original resolution that he wrote up, I believe, was the one that you're looking at right now, except for the last paragraph that was put in by the council at that time, which talked about nothing in this resolution shall abrogate the provisions of Charter section one zero zero one, requiring disclosure of financial interests by any elected appointed town official, board or commission member or employee. Because there was concern about people potentially directing projects to certain individuals on the council or other places. But the rest of the resolution was actually written by the town attorney to meet the requirements within the charter, because the charter has a provision that allows the town council to waive the bidding process when it's in the best interest of the community. I will just point out, we're struggling still to get contractors to do certain jobs in town, particularly the Paver project outside here, which I believe would fall within this, these numbers. We've put it out to bid twice and received no bids. We've reached out to local contractors who are not bidding on it because they have a shortage in labor, and it's not worth enough money for them even. And as a result, we're going to be doing it in-house by our Public Works Department. So we're going to be taking Public Works to do that project here rather than selling potholes and other things on the road that they need to be doing. So there are impacts associated with it.
And I do believe that we also received another email once before with a few things listed. Did, did you not send us an email once before with some items listed?
I think this email got sent to the council two or three times.
Okay, okay.
Can I just follow up to something he said?
Yeah, because there was something else I just don't remember right now. Go ahead.
So you just mentioned that we're struggling with like the Paver project. How does waiving or not waiving the bidding process affect it? Their cost is their cost, so whether it's five thousand, ten thousand, or fifteen thousand, whatever their cost is, it's going to be. So how does that example that you gave us apply to this? I'm not seeing the connection.
Because so for a contractor to put together a bid, there are certain requirements associated with it and additional research and everything else that they would need to put together to submit to the town. In conversations with a number of the contractors in town, they're saying that projects that are of a smaller nature like this, it's too much work for them to meet our bidding requirements, and the dollar amounts associated with it don't make, don't make it worth it.
So can I just follow up on that?
Yep.
So the project itself is not what falls in the five to twenty-five thousand, it is the bidding dollar amount that is the five to the twenty-five thousand.
The project dollar amount that drives the whole thing. I mean, if we don't have...
No, that falls within this resolution. That, you're talking about the bidding process, waiving the bidding process. You just stated that the company would make a bid and it would cost them money to do so. If the project is more expensive than, or less expensive than the bidding process costs them, then they wouldn't want to place that bid. So are these numbers, the bidding process numbers, or are these the project numbers?
Those numbers are most likely the project numbers, is my understanding.
So I'm trying to follow what you were saying.
I'd need to go ask to make sure.
So that's what I'm trying to follow. So this is, this resolution is waiving the bidding process up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So a contractor would come in, they would pay money for the, the bid, which is part of the bidding process, they would pay money for that, and that only covers up to twenty-five thousand dollars, right? Okay, so it has nothing to do with the, with the project amount. It has everything to do with the bidding process. I want to bid on this project, so I have to pay money.
So if we were to go out and get, if this resolution were passed, and we were to go out to get quotes, and quotes came in at twenty-five thousand and one dollar, we would then have to go back, sit down, write out a bid specs, and put it out to bid?
Quotes for a project?
For that project.
I'm still confused, go ahead.
So I think what you're trying to say, so like, let's take the paving project for example. So the contractors that you talk to, say, and I'm just using numbers, I'm not saying this is it. So say it costs ten thousand dollars, and then that's not worth it to them to expend the time and effort to put together this bid, which could internally cost them two or three thousand dollars for a ten thousand dollar project. But if we just called them up and said, you don't have to do the bid, we'll just give you the contract for ten thousand, then we'd be more likely to get people to do a project like that?
Well, we're not just calling them up, we're calling at least three, and we're saying, we need you to do this, this, and this for this project. What is it going to cost us? They'll give us a quote, and then we're able to, what we're finding is people are more readily willing to participate in that process.
As opposed to do the time and effort of the bid and submit?
Correct.
Because they don't know who their competition is or how many are coming in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Does that make sense?
It does. I think I'm getting it. Does everybody else get it? Yeah? You get it?
Yes.
You're good. Everybody's good on it? So are we still, do we still want to table this to gather more information, or do we think we have enough information?
My, my issue, my issue again is the charter, and that I don't have enough information in front of me to see what we successfully used this for in the last six months.
Okay.
So I'm still a no, as is, tonight.
Okay, and so if, maybe the town attorney can come and help explain about the charter provision here of the one zero zero one that's in there. We can table it until possibly the next meeting or the meeting after in, you know, September? Or next meeting, yes?
No, I just had a comment.
Okay. So yes, the next meeting. And we can gather more information, get more information. What you're looking for is information of what projects we did under this last year's signed bid waiver that we approved at a council meeting last year. That's what you're looking for?
That is.
Great. And Deputy Mayor King?
The only thing I was going to suggest, and this may be whether it's town manager or Ms. Palmer, is just if it's in an Excel spreadsheet, maybe that might be a lot easier. But I agree that if we can see the last six months, or even I would say a year, because this is really also about, if I remember correctly, even channeling Counselor Gamble, the pandemic and all that type of stuff, and that also weighed heavy on what we could or couldn't do. So I would, I would go back a year. I would say not just the six months, but I would say if we could see how this would have affected one way or the other in a year in Excel spreadsheet, and I know this might be a little bit more work, however...
It's fine.
Yeah, thank you. Is, what did we lose because we did not have this in? So I think that would also be beneficial to say, you know what, we could have done X, Y, and Z. This way also the taxpayers are aware of, okay, wow, I've been asking for that sidewalk in front of my house forever. We couldn't do it because of that? I wish we would have done it.
Outside of some staff anecdotally type things with that, I don't know if I can get that. You know, like in a budget report, that wouldn't pump out of the system because that project was never done.
Okay, right, 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 right.
But I can try to ask anecdotally if there's anything from staff.
Yeah, as long as the heart is there, that, that's really, I think that would be helpful. So cool.
And I don't believe that we signed the resolution or agreed on the resolution a full twelve months ago. I think maybe it was more like nine or six or eight months, something like that?
I think it was six.
Okay. Counselor Evans?
I was just going to request that when we see this resolution again, that in the second to last paragraph, if we could just say the fiscal year? Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? I also just wanted to, I, I appreciate the idea of looking back at our history and how this might have previously affected us, and I, my request is just that when the information comes to us, that all the other stuff is kind of out of it, and that we can really focus on the specific information that this relates to, you know, and how, and, and maybe just how financially or timeline it might have impacted us too, if you have any input on that. Great.
So could I get a motion to table this in the next meeting, please?
Motion to table the resolution waiving the bidding process to the next scheduled meeting of July twenty? July seventeen. Mr. Minascalco, will two weeks actually give you enough time to get us that, or do you want this into September?
We could, we could try for it. If we don't get there, we will have to just go to September. That's, we'll just have you table it again.
It's not postponed. Table this one, you need more information.
So motion to table resolution waiving the bidding process until the next scheduled meeting of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. I'm clearly saying that wrong.
No, I just wanted, for a clarification, my understanding of tables, once you table something, someone specifically has to ask to bring it back. We are asking for it to be on the next agenda.
We're postponing it, we're postponing it. Yeah, postponing it.
All right, third time's the charm.
Sure.
Motion to postpone the resolution waiving the bidding process until the next scheduled meeting, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Certainly.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, thank you, the motion carries. And moving on, Counselor Evans, thirteen E.
Thirteen E. Resolution approving an offer of a tax assessment agreement with Maguire Road Associates LLC. Whereas a request for tax abatement has been received from Maguire Road Associates LLC for property located at ninety-five John Fitch Boulevard, South Windsor, Connecticut, and whereas the town of South Windsor's Tax Partnership Program established pursuant to Connecticut General State Statute section twelve dash sixty-five B is intended to encourage the development and expansion of quality business in town through tax and other economic incentives, and is designed to retain and attract businesses that will generate substantial additional tax revenues and employment opportunities for the town while providing quality goods and services. Whereas at the Economic Development Commission meeting held on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the commission reviewed and recommended that a tax assessment agreement be offered to Maguire Road Associates LLC, and whereas the town manager recommends pursuant to said program that a tax assessment agreement will be offered to Maguire Road Associates LLC as an incentive to invest in estimated eight million four hundred thousand dollars in total cost for expansion or corporate headquarters, that includes a new storage building, outdoor storage, operations, expansion, et cetera, in South Windsor, the land and building improvements collectively referred to as the real property. Now therefore be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council is pleased to offer a tax assessment agreement between the town and Maguire Road Associates LLC, per the details listed on attached exhibit A, commencing with the grand list following the date, the certificate of occupancy issued for the real property, provided however that if such assessment is char, changed in any future town reevaluation, the new assessed value of the real property shall be reduced by the percentage applicable to the year within the abatement agreement period such assessment is changed, and be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council's offer to Maguire Road Associates LLC is conditioned upon Maguire Road Associates LLC one, meeting the estimated eight million four hundred thousand dollars. LLC, one, meeting the estimated $8,400,000 construction cost figure and agreeing to the estimated assessment figure, and two, continuing to pay the real estate taxes on the facility for a minimum of 10 years from the date the certificate of occupancy is issued. If Maguire Road Associates LLC fails to meet either of these conditions, Maguire Road Associates LLC shall refund the Town of South Windsor all of the tax benefit reductions it has received. And be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council's offer to contingent upon the execution of a written agreement by Maguire Road Associates LLC, reflecting the terms set forth in the resolution, and such other terms as the town may require.
Sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Meniskalko, could you please speak to us about this?
Yeah, so what we're doing is some housekeeping. Last, your last meeting, I think the council members, you approved a resolution for Hartford Trucking. And for their conversations and trying to get their agreement together with them, it came to light that their property is actually held by an LLC rather than Hartford Trucking. So as a result, we need the resolution to actually state the LLC's name rather than Hartford Trucking. So that it's the exact same resolution that all of you approved, it's just that the name is the LLC rather than Hartford Trucking.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, wait, did we do a first and a second? Did I do a first and a second? I did?
You did.
I did, okay. And no one's opposed, okay. And the motion carries. Thank you. And Deputy Mayor King, 13F.
Resolution approving the annual salary increase of 3% for the fiscal year 2023-2024 for Ms. Amanda Poma, Clerk of the Council. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves an annual salary increase of 3% for fiscal year 2023-2024 for Amanda Poma, Clerk of the Council, set annual salary rate to be retroactive from July 1, 2023.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, thank you, the motion carries. Council Lidecker, 13G, that's our new paragraphs, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing Matthew Syracuse to the South Windsor Town Council and postponing consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Matthew Syracuse to the South Windsor Town Council for a term ending November 11, 2023, to fill the unexpired term of Jamie Gamble, and postpones consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any? The motion carries. Deputy Mayor King, 13H.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing Nitha Longo to the South Windsor Town Council, postponing consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Nitha Longo to the South Windsor Town Council for a term ending November 11, 2023, to fill the unexpired term of Andrew Paterna, and postpones consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor?
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, thank you, the motion carries. Passage of ordinance, item 14, none. Public input on any matter.
Madam Mayor, sorry. Can I just get clarification on the previous two agenda items with November 11?
November 11th date?
Yes, that's not Election Day?
I looked at that myself, and I said, November, that could be our first meeting date, because we don't meet until the Monday after the Election Day.
This is the Saturday after.
Seventh is Election Day, so what day, November 11th, would be a Saturday? So what's our first meeting date after? Shh, count it out, Karen.
13?
13?
Yeah.
13? So we should change the 11th to the 13th? That's our first meeting? What? No?
Would we still be meeting on the first and third Mondays? Because that would not be Election Day.
No, we have to have an organizational meeting right after the election, yes. And then it kicks into the, yes.
Okay. I just wasn't clear on the date, because I was thinking that's a very late day for Election Day.
That's what I thought too, when I looked at November 11. So it's our first meeting, carrying out the term, what's, but they're on until Election Day, which is the 7th.
Seven.
So it has to be the 7th instead of 11 on this resolutions. So let's back up just for a minute, and let's do friendly amendments on these last two resolutions of 13G and H to reflect November...
7.
Go ahead with it, Council Evans.
I would like to propose a friendly amendment to item 13G to change November 11, 2023 to November 7, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, I can't second that.
You can't second that, it's yours? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to item 13H to change the date from November 11, 2023 to November 7, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, sadly 11th, and I thought, oh, that's a little late. Okay. So now we're on public input for any matter. Item 15. Public input for any other matter shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by myself, the speaker shall approach the lecturer and give their name and address. Speaker shall avoid personal attacks or amputing or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any matter not on the agenda? Come on up, Mr. Larson. Mike, help him out with the button. There's a little button on the, there you go, you're good.
Okay. Al Larson, 46, Jake Slane. I guess my question is, is to get this, this issue about the recreation and indoor pool moving along. I've basically been working on this for over 20 years, and I would just like to find out from the Park and Rec, Planning Committee, from Mrs. Evans, and Matt, also from you, when we can finalize our efforts to put this on a referendum. In other words, finalize the configuration, finalize the cost, finalize the contingency, and really move this along. Because I don't know if you folks know it or not, but we are the largest town in Connecticut, given our ability to pay and our population that does not have an indoor pool. Now, think of that. And we started working on this in 1998. That referendum failed. Two years later, we passed the referendum for the improvements to Veterans Memorial Park. But this building will be, other than a school building, the most used and important social and physical fitness building in our town. And this isn't a 20-year building, or a 40-year building. This is a 60-year building before improvements. So anything you folks can do to move this along, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the council on any
Just like to question your last two resolutions. I believe the date you have is wrong, because you're sworn in until that Monday organizational meeting, so it's not November 7. You're in office until that organizational meeting, until you take the swearing in, so it should be November 13, which is that Monday organizational meeting, that's the first Monday after Election Day. And also I have a question in regards to the resolution H, 13H. How can you appoint someone who is currently a member of the Board of Education and has not resigned from the Board of Education?
She's resigned.
Do we have that?
We don't have to accept it. It's not up to us, or, yes, the town clerk has that.
Can we make that available? Because it should be available to everyone, because it does not look like she's resigned from the Board of Ed, and it looks like she's still trying to serve on two town bodies, which is not the right thing to do. So you really should follow the rules and put the Board of Education resignation on your agenda. Thank you.
We don't have to approve their resignation, thank you. Okay, so, moving on, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Not seeing anyone, moving on to communications. Have you seen, Council Evans?
Thank you. I know at last meeting, we touched on the Park and Rec facilities and how to move forward with that. I had kind of been holding off, you know, to really have some discussions with our Park and Rec Director, and for the Park and Rec Commission to meet, but I'm looking to the council to see what interest you have in trying to move this to a Park and Rec Commission role. I think we need to facilitate a transition between the Park and Rec Facility Committee and making this a designation under the Park and Rec Commission, and allowing them to move forward with this, based on the information gathered by the committee. So I guess what I'm looking for is whether it's a discussion item on our next agenda, or if we want to make that move. I think, you know, to Mr. Larson's point, it's something that I brought up at last meeting, and I think we really do need to make some kind of action to give them the power to move ahead. Right now, it's kind of just in limbo. I know that Molly has really been so focused on moving into that new building, and that has taken a lot of time, but I think she and the commission are ready to really take this on and move forward with it.
Mr. Meniskalko, do you have anything to say, input on that?
I did, I did have a conversation briefly via email with our Park and Rec Director today to put together a scope for what types of activities need to be done moving forward. We can certainly try to get a resolution together to provide to the council at your next meeting to consider. I guess it's up to the nine members of the council what direction you want to go with. Who's going to actually run it, but you can have a draft of something in front of you.
So we can put that on as a discussion item in your next, Council Lidecker?
Oh, my bad.
Okay.
Can I just follow up? What did you ask for from her, a scope of what?
A scope of activities that need to be done to move some type of a project forward to get in front of you. You know, I know the last committee got together, they looked at a number of different locations, and spent a lot of time ruling out a lot of them, and really came back with just the idea that Old Orchard Hill will work as a temporary location for the time being. I think getting, figuring out what we need to do permanent, long-term, is a different conversation that probably needs to occur now that we've gotten that out of the way. I think it was kind of hard to have that conversation with the impending move and needs that were on the department. So now that that's kind of done, hopefully we can have that conversation in a little bit more of a, less rushed fashion.
I think, you know, my recommendation would be for the next meeting, if we could try to, the council created that subcommittee, so we are going to have to sunset it, close it, right? Because it still exists currently, the facilities subcommittee.
I don't believe so, because they provided you with their report, which was the end of their requirements for all of you.
I think, I think we might need to be sent the resolution related to that, because I have some question about that. I think that we would probably, as a council, have to finalize that, just based on what their parameters were, on what their, there was other things in the resolution, to my memory, that perhaps we should review that. And then maybe to give that, that subcommittee access to provide their information to the Park and Rec Commission, to allow the Park and Rec Commission to come to us, to present what they see, I think kind of like what Mike is saying, Park and Rec Commission and Molly, to present to us what they see would be a good way for them to move forward, to present and work for the town of the needs for the facilities going forward. That would be my recommendation.
So we can get that on the next agenda. Deputy Mayor King?
So we're just suggesting, if I understand correctly, it's just going to be a discussion item? And then we, okay.
And I have for communications, from former Mayor Haven's son and family, Dear Mayor and Council Members, how Dad loved to watch the televised meetings. He appreciated all of your time and energy you all put into your charge. Your remembrance and flowers were deeply appreciated. Sincerely, Eddie and family. A thank you card from the council. And then that's it for communications. And now executive session, we have none. Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any? The motion carries. Thank you. Happy fourth, everyone.